Good evening all, welcome to the Marion City Council meeting for the month of August. We'll begin by asking Councilwoman Fuller to please lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I appreciate that. Let the records reflect that all are present and accounted for in a virtual setting. And we will begin this evening with approval of the minutes from the July 8th and July 13th meetings. May I have a motion to approve? And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, that will be Councilwoman Fuller with the motion, Councilman Hale with the second. Is there any discussion on the minutes as presented? All right, if everyone is satisfied, all in favor signify with a thumbs up. And those opposed, it is unanimous, let the records reflect. We'll move on to, I will request to the council, if there are any conflicts of interest on any agenda items this evening.
No sir.
All right, everyone is good, then we are good as well. Moving into introduction this evening, we have ordinance 062020, this is budget amendment number three. May I have a motion to introduce this evening?
So moved.
And a second please.
Second.
Very good, that is a motion by Mayor Portem Foster, a second by Councilman Vigliotti. Is there any discussion on the budget amendment as presented? All right, everyone is satisfied, it has been moved and seconded that we introduce ordinance 062020, budget amendment number three. All in favor signify with a thumbs up. And any opposed? No, it is unanimous in favor, thank you. Next up for adoption, we have our monthly water allocation, this is resolution 2020-09, water allocation for August of 2020. I will entertain a motion. All right, and that's for approval?
Yes sir.
Very good, is there a second?
All second.
All right, very good, the one I was gonna give the motion to also seconded it, so here's how we're gonna play this. Councilman Hanes made the motion, Councilwoman Fuller provided the second. Is there any discussion on the water allocation? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2020-09, water allocation for August 2020. All in favor signify with thumbs up. And anyone opposed? All right, that is also unanimous, thank you. We're right into our city manager report. I'll ask Mr. Weprick, do you have anything to add to your report from Wednesday?
Sir, nothing to add this evening.
Very good, are there any questions regarding the city manager report or departmental reports as they were presented? All right, everyone seems satisfied, thank you, we shall move on. Mr. Gallow, do you have anything to add from your report Wednesday evening?
No, just want to expand on one item, by the time we meet again, we will have had the Davis sentencing, and if that goes according to schedule, and Councilman Vigliotti is preparing the statement on behalf of the city, so that, you know, that's all taken care of. There is one thing we're tracking down, that if you're interested in attending the sentencing, you need to let me know, I don't know that it's a possibility, given the standards that we have for being in the courtroom, but if you're interested, let me know so that I can pass it on. We're toying with the idea of having a group of employees there that are interested to support our one employee that is gonna be testifying during the hearing. So if anybody else is interested, let me know, that's it.
All right, so if anyone is interested in attending that, please let Mr. Gallow know. And no guarantees, we'll just see what happens.
September 3rd.
September 3rd is the date, as of right now.
Right.
All right, any questions for Mr. Gallow before we move on? All right, with no old business, we move into new business, and we have seven items on new business this evening. So this might be our longest list yet for this, this council. We'll start with our monthly financial report, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved to approve?
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, motion is from Councilman Vigliotti, the second is from Mayor Portem Foster. Are there any questions or discussion on the monthly financial report? All right, if everyone is satisfied, all in favor signify with thumbs up. And any opposed? No, that is unanimous, thank you all, we're gonna do the same for accounts payables, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, that will be Councilwoman Fuller with the motion, I'll award the second to Councilman Hale. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hale, you were way too excited about that, that was outstanding. Any discussion from council? No, we don't, very good, it's been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payables. All in favor signify with your thumbs up. Any opposed, is unanimous in favor. Moving into our Head Start lease renewal, every year we determine whether we want to renew the lease for the Head Start program that uses the building at Roberts Mill Park. I'll entertain a motion, please specify if you are approving or not in your motion.
I make a motion to approve the renewal.
Very good, do I have a second?
I second that.
Very good, we have a motion to approve as presented from Councilman Hanes, a second from Councilman Vigliotti. Is there any discussion from council, questions, comments, queries? Accepting everything, nothing, very good, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Head Start lease renewal as presented. All in favor signify with your thumbs up. Any opposed, and that is unanimous in support. All right, item number four, memorandums of understanding, this is for our Parks and Rec Department agreeing with, I'm gonna list them off here. FSK Junior Eagles Lacrosse, FSK Junior Eagles Football, FSK Junior Eagles Soccer, Tawnytown Lions Baseball, and Tawnytown Monarchs Softball. I'll entertain a motion, and as before, please specify if you are approving or not.
So moved to approve.
Very good, do I have a second?
All second.
Very good, we have a motion from Councilman Hale, and a second from Councilwoman Fuller. Is there any discussion from the council on one or all of these memorandums of understanding? Councilman Vigliotti, you have the floor.
I wanted to offer up the amendment that on, it would be under section three subsection A, number one, where it talks about the copy of the schedule being submitted. I did wanna go ahead and include specifically that it would be to the Director of Parks and Rec. I know last year we had some concerns or some issues about scheduling, because there was some confusion about who was supposed to receive what, and I just wanted to be spelled out clear, clearly, you know, where those schedules were supposed to be submitted to, so that there would be no such confusion in the future.
Okay, was that change not made since Wednesday night? I'm looking through it now to be sure.
That was updated, that was in the document that Clara sent out after the workshop.
Well, right, and I just didn't know whether that was something that I had to offer up as an amendment or not, given that it wasn't in the original set that we had.
I'm trying to find it in this set, you said it was under three general terms and conditions. Subsection A, submitted to Parks and Rec, Director of Parks and Recreation, there it is. I don't believe that needs to be an amendment. Parliamentarian, may I ask for your ruling on that?
Yeah, you're adopting what's on your agenda tonight, which is the revised one, so if you just adopted, it's the revised one.
Very good, so the motion is to approve as presented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, is there any other discussion from the council? All right, if everyone is satisfied, it's been moved and seconded to approve all of the memorandums of understanding between the various sports organizations and the city of Tawnytown. All in favor signify with your thumbs up. And any opposed, that is unanimous in favor, the record shall reflect. Up next, we have our annual town county agreement. As discussed, there are just a couple changes in figures, but the overall agreement remains the same as previous years. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, I have a motion from Mayor Portem Foster, second from Councilwoman Fuller. Is there any discussion on the town county agreement as presented this evening? All right, hearing none, all in favor signify with your thumbs up. And any opposed? Very good, is all in favor unanimously. Next, use of restricted funds for public works, if you recall from the discussion Wednesday evening, as a result of the water main break that took place on Bumgardner and Tawney Heights, they're requesting that they be allowed to use restricted funds from the water account to repair the damage to the roadway. Is there anything I've missed, Mr. Weprick, on that?
You summed it up well, thank you.
Very good, do we have a figure, rough or otherwise, for that?
We do, I believe it is. I've got it in my notes here. Have to apologize, that is back in my office.
Okay. Very good, do you have a, a rough number, a cap that you would like us to provide on that, or?
Second, I might be getting a text on that.
I imagine that would be Mr. Smekin to save the day here shortly.
That might be. No such luck.
No such luck, okay. We do not have a figure, however, the request is still to use restricted funds from the water account to repair the road, to pay for the repairs of the road on Bumgardner, as opposed to dipping into our HURs.
Perhaps the motion could limit the use of funds for the Bumgardner Road Repair.
Very good, I find that acceptable, I'll leave that up to whoever wants to make a motion. Please specify your motion appropriately.
I'll make a motion for the use of restricted funds in Public Works Department for Bumgardner Avenue.
Very good, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Very good, we do have a motion from Councilman Vigliotti, and a second from Councilman Hale. Are there any questions regarding the motion or the, the topic at hand? All right, hearing none, all in favor signify with your thumbs up. And any opposed? Very good, that is unanimous, unanimous in favor, thank you. Moving right on, city staff changes, I requested this be put on the agenda for this evening. There are three reasons to do so, first off, our Economic Development Director Nancy McCormick has announced her retirement. September 4th is slated to be her last day employed with the city of Tawnytown, before she goes into dip-silusious retirement. And I know we all wish her the best in whatever she chooses to do afterwards. I know she assured me that she will remain in touch and within reach if there's anything we needed from her. She was here for a very long time, and took great care of our Economic Development Department, as well as our Main Street program. With that, we will be opening that search in the next, within the next two weeks, we'll start putting that out there. Job descriptions are being put together, updated from that amount of time. I know the council had heard about this last week, but I do wanna make it public that yes, she is retiring, and we will be searching for a new director. Secondly, we have had this looming over our heads for quite some time now, and that is our city manager position. Mr. Weprick has been in the acting city manager role while sharing that with planning and zoning for, it's been over two years now, is that correct? I think 27 months is my calculation.
That sounds about right.
Right, I don't know if he gained any gray hair during that time, but he definitely didn't lose any gray hair. I have had the honor to work with Jim for a little over a year now, and it was kinda unique. I was getting used to my new position, he was still trying to balance his multiple positions with the city. We've gone through such a tremendous amount of things during this past little over a year, between the city hall incident, the pandemic, the, I feel like if you name it, we've been throwing that curve ball. He has done, I think, a great job in leading the city, directing the staff, keeping me updated on things. I've been very pleased with what he's done, he and I have talked a few times. Occasionally, he and I had some bumps, we've cleared them, I think we've come out pretty well in the end. With that being said, I would like to make a nomination this evening that we appoint Jim Weprick as the permanent city manager. And I have chosen that his salary, being at a level 10 step 7 of $88,907.67, is what I present as his package to the council. I will ask for a motion to approve that nomination if you see fit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the nomination of Jim Weprick as permanent city manager, with the salary stipulated by the mayor.
Very good, do I have a second to that?
I'd like to second that motion.
Very good, it's been moved and seconded, do I have any further discussion from the council? Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we appoint Jim Weprick as our permanent city manager, at the salary of $88,907.67 annually. All in favor signify with your thumbs up. And any opposed? Very good, that passed unanimously, congratulations, Mr. Weprick, is well earned, I know you worked hard for it, it is yours. I know there may be light at the end of the tunnel, but obviously until we talk about the next topic, you're still doing some double duty there. That next topic being, with him moving up to that new position, we will need a new planning and zoning administrator. Obviously, we're gonna be hiring Economic Development, I believe we can run both of these searches concurrently. I will be seeking assistance from the council during selection processes, going through resumes, going through, or doing interviews, although they may end up being virtually, I assume. I will be asking some of you to help out in those capacities. But that is the intention, we will be hiring two positions, Economic Development Director and Planning and Zoning Administrator. I'd like to ask the council, do you have any questions, concerns, or thoughts as we move forward searching for those positions? Everyone's good with the ideas? Very good, you know, with you muted, I just, I don't even hear anything from you, that's great, I just see nodding. All right, with that, is there any other items of new business? I'll throw it out there to anybody. If we're, Councilman Vigliotti, I see a finger in the air.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question with reference to the, the request from the Department of Public Works for the voluntary conservation of water. You'd mentioned you were gonna issue a, an order for that, is that still going to occur? And if so, when and what can we do to help spread the word?
Very good, so that executive order will be signed immediately after this meeting, it is on my desk right now waiting for my signature. It will go into effect immediately, it will be posted on city social media and the website, talking about what this means. To give the highlights, it is a voluntary conservation effort, asking people to restrain from washing their cars, watering their lawns, things that are not abundantly necessary at this time. It has some ramifications for businesses who operate car washes, things like that. We just ask that they conserve water where possible. If we don't get appropriate recharge from rainfall, and the wells can't seem to refill or recharge, we may need to move into a phase two, which I believe is more of a mandatory conservation. So we would like to avoid that whenever possible. However, as of this evening, there will be the phase one, water conservation. Any other questions about that? No? Very good, we're gonna move into council member reports, I'll begin with Councilman Hanes, do you have anything to report to us this evening?
Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, nothing in context of public works. However, I do wanna take this opportunity to extend my deepest congratulations to Mr. Weprick. I'm terribly excited for you to fill this role permanently, and I wish you the best of luck moving forward. But that's all from me.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the rest of the council, and of course, Mr. Mayor, you as well, appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir, thank you, and thank you, Councilman Hanes. We'll move on to Councilman Hale, I'm trying to remember where you all sit up here as we do this. Councilman Hale would be next in line, do you have anything for us this evening?
Thanks, sir, a few things, of course Lorena is busy keeping in touch with all the TAA members of sports teams. Football is canceled their season, football, Junior Eagles Cheers canceled as well. Yeah, solid times, it's, it's, it is what it is. The, but she's, you keep me in great contact with them and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. The movie night, of course, was a, was a great success, a lot of things she's doing. The nice thing is she has a, a very viable, workable board that's proactive in bringing up events. The food truck thing was brought up last fall as, as an idea, and knocked, knocked out of the park. Many of the vendors sold out of foods, and, and a number of them asked Lorena to please call them for the next event. So that's, that's pretty cool, that's a, that's not a huge tax on the city. In fact, it costs us very little, we don't need to do a petting zoo all the time, but just a place for families to go get, get a, get a meal, get out of the house. So with that, Jim, congratulations, sir, the 20 some years I've known you, still know your favorite color, your middle name, but you've done a great job, and appreciate you hanging in there. Took great, great leadership for you to do so, and my hat's off to you, congratulations.
Very good, thank you, Councilman. Mayor Portem Foster, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yes, last Wednesday, as a matter of fact, before our workshop meeting, I attended a virtual meeting that was put on by Kaylee Lockhart, who is the Director of Retail Association in Maryland. And she had Comptroller Francho join the meeting and speak to the Main Street people. The Main Street directors shared all of their woes, all of which, you know, we're all in the same boat. And just shared some ideas about what they, different things they were doing, as well as spoke to the comptroller about what he might do to help. One of the things that they had a problem with was grants for, for nonprofits. The comptroller couldn't offer anything specifically about it, but rather suggested that we champion the governor's office that handles this particular, that handles nonprofits, because there is money. He spoke about the tax-free week, which I think we are in, for back to school, is that, did that start this week?
I have heard nothing about that this year at all, interesting.
Well, yes, it is, I have the date here, it is August 9th through the 15th is a tax-free week for back to school. And face masks are on the list, because somebody asked. The comptroller is a, you might be aware, is a big advocate of small business. And what he is in the process of doing is trying to get approval to dip into the rainy day fund. They have like half a billion dollars or something in there. And he wants to be able to get money from there to support small business, he calls it small business, small business Main Street, he's doing that like as I speak. And if that money is released, he wants it to come to the municipalities without a whole lot of strings. Just get it to the small business as quickly as you can. So that was encouraging. All in all, it was a pretty good meeting, like I said, he's always been an advocate of small business, and we're hoping that he can get that funding. That's it.
Great, thank you, Mayor Portem. The comptroller's advocacy for small business was responsible for the microbrewery boom that we have right now in the state of Maryland. He really helped push that, he championed that idea, and we were able to get brewery fire here in town, all as a result of his advocacy for that. It's great to hear that he's trying to get more funds for small, small businesses. It would be great if they would bring it to the municipalities direct, instead of having to funnel it through so many other places first. That would be a huge help for everybody.
Yes, that's exactly what he wants to do.
That's great, the, the less people you have to talk to, the easier it is for small businesses to get that grant, easier for us to manage getting it to them as well, so that's great news, thank you so much, Mayor Portem. Councilman Vigliotti, what do you have for us this evening?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I have the police report for the month of July 2020. In July, the total number of dispatched generated calls for service numbered 480. The total number of citations issued, state, city, and repair orders numbered 68. The total number of adult arrests numbered 13, the total number of juvenile arrests numbered 1, and the total number of warnings issued were 34. Stephen Sacadals, on July 1st, 2020, was promoted to Senior Patrol Officer. In terms of the good news department, all three of our recruits are scheduled to graduate from the academy in Sykesville tomorrow, August 11th at 1:00 PM. They'll then be sworn in on August 12th, and they will start the 10-week field training process that week. And the chief hopes to have formal introductions for the three recruits with mayor and council at the next in-person meeting that we have. In terms of community outreach, National Night Out is still scheduled. The date is going to be October 6th, 2020, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. However, that's all going to depend on the situation with coronavirus, so the department is going to be monitoring that. And if it's possible to have it, they will, and if not, unfortunately, we'll have to cancel, but for the time being, they wanna keep it, you know, a possibility. And then if I may speak for myself for just a moment, I want to congratulate you, Jim, on the promotion to city manager. I think you've done an incredible job over the last 27 months, as the mayor said. And I wanna join in the compliments that everybody else has bestowed on you, and I think you're gonna do phenomenal in this position. And then as a last quick note, I also wanted to say thank you to Nancy McCormick for the inordinate number of years dedicated service that she's given to the, to the city. I, I wanna share a brief personal story about this, some of you know this, some of you don't. When we, when we moved to Tawnytown, my family and I was about 10 years old, and where the dance studio is now, my mom, back in the late 1990s, had a craft store there called The Country Mouse. And the person that she worked with and who guided her through this whole process was Nancy McCormick. And my mom was so, you know, impressed with Nancy, and was so grateful for the help that she gave her, that, you know, my mom, you know, 20 some years later, living four and a half hours away, still asks me how Nancy's doing, still asks me what Nancy's up to. And so when my mom and my dad were in the process of, you know, putting this store together, you know, as a, you know, fifth grader, I spent quite a number of afternoons in that store while they worked on it, doing chores. And this one particular Saturday, I thought I was gonna have an easy morning. I am sitting in the front of the store, I'm listening to country music, 'cause I'm trying to get myself oriented to, to country music. And this woman walks into the store, and she says, hello, Joe. And I said, oh, hi, how are you? I had no idea who this is, and I'm, so I said to her, I said, you know, are you looking for my mom? And she says, no, I'm looking for you. And I'm, again, I have no idea who this woman is, I have no idea how she knows who I am. And she says, my name is Nancy McCormick, and your mom and your dad have volunteered you to join the volunteer group that is going to be cleaning the sidewalks and the streets downtown today. And so my introduction to municipal service was courtesy of Nancy, who made me go Streep Suites for an entire day. So, you know, I am going to deeply miss her, you know, she helped to instill in me a love of community service. She has been full of tremendous wisdom and kindness and support and compassion, and I really am going to miss her. You know, whoever ends up succeeding her, I look forward to working with, but, you know, Nancy will, of course, always have a special place in my heart, and Nancy, if you're watching, thank you for everything that you've done for us and for me. And, Mr. Mayor, that's it, and thank you very much.
Very good, well said, Councilman, I appreciate your, your kind Very good. Well said, councilman. I appreciate your, your kind words, and I'm sure Nancy does as well. I'm sure we could find thousands of those very similar stories across the city and probably across the state from people with how, how far her reach is. Nancy was someone who could meet anybody and, you know, make a connection almost instantly. Phenomenal story. Councilwoman Fuller, do you have anything for us this evening?
I will try to keep it quick. As far as planning and zoning, or the Planning Commission, I should say. Meats Crossing is continuing on with their phase two construction. I think even with the economic instability, they are still managing to bring in house buyers, which is amazing. And I think the only other thing of relevance is the county liaison spoke about the master plan for water and sewer. They're all working on that, of course, via online. And I think our, I think that, that's probably pretty much it. I will keep it short. I have another meeting at 8:30.
Okay, you have a half hour. It's a short drive. You'll be okay.
I know, right?
I guess they should be selling houses as well, considering interest rates are pretty much non-existent at this point. So if you're looking to buy, now's a great time. Just don't kickstart another recession like they did in 2008. My report, it was refreshing to get back to some of the mayoral duties that I haven't been able to enjoy for the first seven months of the year, and that is going out to events and talking to people and things like that. Mission of Mercy had a picnic this past Friday at the park, kind of volunteer appreciation. They did a great job of reminding everyone, keep your distance, wear your masks, all of that. But it was great food. It was really nice to talk to those people and just thank them for the great work they do for the people of Tawnytown. Especially now as we get into these times where some are really struggling, being out of work, being laid off, things like that. Mission of Mercy really helps fill a void there for these people. And they came to town to have their employee appreciation picnic, and it was really nice to be there with them. Going along with what Councilman Vigliotti said a little bit ago, yes, we have three recruits who are set to graduate the most bizarre academy class you could imagine. You know, everything nowadays, we're just going to proceed with due to COVID-19. But due to COVID-19, they, they had to do virtual learning. They had to, you know, essentially get kicked out for two weeks and then come back in again, and it was very difficult, I'm sure, for them, as well as the instructors, everyone putting it on. It made a little bit of a challenge for our chief and for Jim to go through, okay, you know, administrative leave, how are we taking care of these guys? It was challenging, but as of tomorrow, they should be graduating. Wednesday morning, I have the absolute honor of swearing them in. And as I thought about it, once I'm done with them, that'll be six members of the police department I will have sworn in in the 15 months that I've been in office, which is kind of a neat thing to think about. It's good to see our department doing so well and bring on these three new recruits. It's going to be a great thing for us. I know all the guys down there are looking forward to it. Starting the schedules a little settled down again by having more people out there. Other than that, that's kind of where we are right now. It's, it's August. We've been going through this for a long time. I appreciate everyone hanging in there, working with residents of the city, passing on information, talking to people, still doing your duties as a council. I know some places talked about how they felt that their council, they were just kind of hanging it up and be like, well, I'll get back to it when it's over. And I, I feel like this council has not done that. You've been out there, and I greatly appreciate it. You bring in reports. You keep in contact. It's a great thing. I really do appreciate everything you've done. Hopefully, someday, we're going to get to whatever the new normal is, and no one can guess what it's going to be. I'm looking forward to the day where I'm not going to be in a big echoey council chambers all by myself yelling at a computer screen. I might do that for fun on weekends, but it'd be nice to conduct business in person again. City Hall renovations should be wrapping up in the next, we'll just say, two weeks. Jim, you think?
25th, I believe, is our, our new date.
25th is the new date, it sounds like. So things are progressing. We're moving forward. I'm thrilled with what's happening in Tawnytown, and I see great things coming up for us again. So any ideas you have as a council, what you want to see in the city, please bring them. Let's fill up the agenda. Let's figure out how we're going to make this an even better place than it already is. I know we all love living here. Let's just make sure everyone else shares that same love with us. All right? Anything else from anybody? Go to the order. Council, staff, attorney? Everyone's happy. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Councilwoman Fuller made the motion. Mayor Portem Foster made the second. All in favor of adjourning and seeing each other in September? I said the month right this time. Signify with your thumbs up. Very good. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for a great evening.
Right, all. Thank you.
Night, everybody.